Declare this meeting of the Corleville City Council to order, please. Bring it to order. A regular meeting, January 28th, 2020. Roll call.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Gross.
Here.
Gil.
Present.
Dodds.
Present.
Goodrich.
Here.
Okay, all council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and several other staff members are in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, so move.
Second.
Moved by Gil, seconded by Goodrich. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have a proclamation this evening that I'd like to read in honor of the 19th Proclamation, whereas in 1848, people gathered together in Seneca Falls, New York, incited the unfairness of depriving women of the right to vote, and whereas suffragists, I have a hard time saying that word, I'm sorry, and it gets repeated, pushed for a single constitutional amendment granting female suffrage on the federal level dubbed the Susan B. Anthony Amendment, and whereas Carrie Chapman Cat led the national movement, meeting with President Woodrow Wilson to secure the support for suffrage in light of the women's contributions during World War I, and whereas the House of Representatives took a historic vote on May 21st, 1919, followed by the Senate on June 4th, 1919, and three-fourths of the states needed to ratify the 19th Amendment, and whereas Iowa was the 10th state to ratify the 19th Amendment on July 2nd, 1919, and Tennessee was the 36th state to ratify the 19th Amendment, making it law of the land on August 26th, 1920, whereby millions of women were enfranchised, and whereas the ratification of the 19th Amendment ensured women could more fully participate in our democracy and fundamentally change the role of women in the civic life of our nation, and whereas most of the women who began asking for the right to vote never lived to see the enfranchisement of women, and whereas women are running for office in unprecedented numbers, may current politicians, both male and female, remember that they follow in the footsteps of these great suffragists. And whereas the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment represents a historical milestone to be lauded and celebrated. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Corleville commemorates the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the 19th Amendment, providing for women's suffrage to the Constitution of the United States, and reaffirms the desire that city of Corleville citizens to continue to strengthen democratic participation and inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the 19th Amendment. Therefore, citizens of Corleville shall enjoy the freedom of voter participation, continue to fight for voting rights for all citizens, and celebrate this important milestone by proclaiming the calendar year of 2020 to be the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration. Signed in Corleville, Iowa, this 28th day of January 2020, John A. Lundell, Mayor. And this has the distinction of being the first proclamation I've issued in 2020, so congratulations. I'm going to sign this, and Cindy Conger and Kathy Eisenhofer will be coming up to receive it.
And also one other member of the league, Miriam Timmerhakert.
Oh, absolutely.
She's the president of Corleville, and she's in costume.
I thought she always dressed up.
She always dresses.
She is a suffragist.
I don't know, I think I would have been a suffragist, I think I would have been one of the legal ones.
Yep. So I do have a little speech, so may I give that? I'll do it very quickly. On behalf of the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration, 50/50 in 2020, the Iowa Women's Foundation and the League of Women Voters of Johnson County thank the city of Corleville for passing this proclamation. After 100 years of struggle, the ratification of the 19th Amendment in 1920 was and is a monumental achievement, one that merits attention, education, and promotion throughout Iowa and the nation. The gains, hard won; the status, not done. The future is calling to help learn from the past. The city of Corleville has heard this call and answered.
Thank you very much.
I can take a picture.
Very sturdy.
Gotcha.
Thank you very much.
Yes, for my progress, might be supposed to be made progress.
You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if we're up here too, we don't.
I'd like to also, before we move on to the next item, just recognize that we have a scout in the audience tonight as well, working towards his, one of his badges. So, welcome to the Corleville City Council, and if you have any questions when we're finished, feel free to ask us. Proud to have you here. Thank you. Okay, item five is to present plaques to Matt Grous and Jake Bangold for Volunteer Coach of the Year for their contributions to Corleville Parks and Recreation Youth Programs. And this is something new for us. I'm going to read this script that was provided, describing the worthiness of these two gentlemen receiving the awards. This is the first time the Volunteer Youth Coach of the Year Award is being presented by the city. Corleville Parks and Recreation Athletic Staff Members desire to recognize coaches that go above and beyond in their volunteer work with the Corleville Youth Sports Programming. To be selected for the award, coaches must first be nominated by a parent, coach, or Corleville staff member. All nominations are reviewed by the Corleville Parks and Recreation Athletic Supervisor and Athletic Coordinator. The award recipient is selected based on the nominations he or she receives, number of sports programs he or she has coached, and letters of support. We have two youth sports coaches being recognized this evening. First, we have Matt Grous. He's a resident of Tiffin, has been involved with sports programs in the area for as long as his kids have been able to throw a ball. When Matt is not coaching sports and spending time with his family, he is working for RSM, a public accounting firm in Iowa City. Matt is also a former member of the Iowa City Chamber of Commerce. Matt and his wife Emily have three kids, Hannah 14, Claire 10, and Noah 5. Matt coaches the Renegades 14 U softball team that participates in Corleville's Competitive Youth Softball League, and has helped coach multiple teams in Clear Creek Rec Leagues for T-ball, softball, and basketball. He also helps his son with wrestling and has coached tiny tot soccer, Pee-wee baseball, Pee-wee basketball, and minors T-ball for the Corleville Parks and Rec. And our second recipient is Jake Mangold. Jake was nominated by the IRE Eiker for his outstanding work assisting Matt Grous and for his ability to relate to IRE's son, Peter. Peter is only four, but gets social anxiety that causes him to not want to participate in front of strangers. Jake was able to use his experience as a para educator to work one-on-one with Peter and help him through some of his rough days. Jake was very patient with not only Peter, but all of the kids. Thanks to Jake, Peter had an amazing time and was sad that T-ball ended so soon. Jake has worked as a pastor for the last 10 years in Iowa City. Jake and his wife Becky have three kids, Marnie, Emerson, and Judah. As a pastor, Jake works with international students from the University of Iowa, and his main community outreach focus was the International Giveaway. The International Giveaway would collect furniture and household items, donations, to help incoming U of I students from around the world. Congratulations to both our Youth Sports Coach of the Year recipients. Okay, if the award recipients would like to come up, we have some plaques to present.
And this is Jordan with the Parks and Rec Department, Recreation Department, Sports and Recreation. Okay, yeah, congratulations, thank you very much.
One, two, three, Jordan, watch out there, Jake. One, two, three, okay.
Okay. That's Jake. Jake, congratulations, thank you very much for all that you do. Congratulations.
Now, item six is citizen comments, and we have some people just waiting in the wings to come and talk to us, so please sign in and introduce yourselves and...
Yeah, we're just chomping at the bit because it's all good news. So, I'm Jim Hayes, I'm on the Corleville Community Food Pantry Board of Directors. I'm here to give you a monthly and a year-end report. Just to start with, we did in December say goodbye to two board members, Melissa and John Greve, but in January, that means we got to welcome aboard two new members to our Board of Directors. I brought one of them here with me tonight, so you can grill them if you'd like. You heard the term RSM earlier, a local company? Well, this is Jennifer Nguyen, she is also from RSM, a local tax and audit company. And with that, this is our newest board member, and next meeting, or next month from today, I'll be bringing the other new board members to introduce to you.
Very good, well, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions for her?
Thank you.
She'll probably, from this point forward, be doing the financial side of it, since I do so well. So, our thanks to the Corleville, the city of Corleville, just for your support and partnership all year long. Like I said, it's all good news. For example, donations were up and expenses were down. What nonprofit isn't happy to report that? In the month of October, we had 895 family visits, serving a total of 393 families. The total number of individuals served was 1,544, and the pounds, as far as food goes, was 37,295. What you're going to notice now, is when I report November, is how the number of families and the amount of food increases. So the community does respond, and we thank them for that. In November, we went from 895 family visits in October to 917 in November. Total families served went up to 408, and the total individuals served was 1,613, and the food went to 39,267 pounds. December, of course, we're thinking holidays, November and December, we served 868 family visits with 391 total families. Total individuals served was 1,480, and 39,645 pounds of food. So the total number of individuals actually went down, but the food went up that was distributed. One thing else I'd like to mention is coming up this year is the Community Meal Program that we do partner with the city. It is pointing to be held at the Corleville Public Library Friday, March 27th, and Friday, June 26th. Now, in addition to the Community Meal Program, we also will be providing the School Break Nutrition Program, and so during winter break, we'll be doing a distribution implemented at the pantry and the schools. I'm sorry, the winter break that we did do, we served 167 families, which equaled, of those families, 425 children, serving a total of 4,220 meals. So tremendous, tremendous response. I think that's what I have, everything I got noted in my binder here, so we're very happy to report all good news and introduce one new board member. If you have questions for me, I'll try and stumble through them, but otherwise, that's my report. Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you and your colleagues for your great service, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comments, well, are there any other citizen comments? Anyone in the audience like to speak to us tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on then to item seven, which is the Bluffs at Brown Deer. This will be the third and final consideration of an ordinance that rezones the Bluffs at Brown Deer near the Brown Deer Golf Center for two residential lots.
Ordinance number 2020-1001, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 664, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as the Bluffs at Brown Deer, from R1 Single Family Residential District to RPUD2 Residential Plan Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption on third and final consideration by Councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. The next four items that we'll consider all relate to the same project. Item B is approving the preliminary plat.
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for the Bluffs at Brown Deer, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gil. Discussion? Roll call.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes, and finally, resolution with intent to dispose of interest in the property.
Resolution of intent to dispose of interest in real property, that property being lots one and two, the Bluffs at Brown Deer Golf Course, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion? Before the roll call, I'll just mention, for the benefit of our scout that's here tonight and anybody else, first of all, the ordinance, this requires three readings to pass at three different council meetings. So we've thoroughly discussed this project, both here in the formal meeting, and then we always have a work session before the formal meeting, where we go over and look at the plans and offer our input. So if it looks like we're just approving things quickly, we are, but only because we've already considered these items very carefully. Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item eight is the Fourth Avenue Sanitary Sewer 2019 Project. This is a resolution setting a public hearing for February 11th on the plans and specifications and estimate of cost.
Resolution setting a public hearing on the plans, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract for the Fourth Avenue Sanitary Sewer 2019, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion? Do you want to just quickly mention, for the benefit of the public, what this project is?
Yeah, this will be a repair project for a sewer line that is on Fourth Avenue that needs to be replaced. That is an area that we are getting infiltration into the system, and so this will take care of that issue.
Great, terrific. Anything else? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item nine is the Project First Avenue Gate Controls. This is for a project that was a stormwater gate control, located at the southwest corner of the First Avenue Bridge over Clear Creek. So item A, I would entertain a motion to approve Change Order Number One for this project. So move. Moved by Gil.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion is approved. Now a resolution accepting the project.
Resolution accepting the First Avenue Flood Gate Controls as completed, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Dodds. Discussion? Roll call.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Passes all ayes. Item 10 is the Coral Ridge Avenue Improvements Phase Two. This is a resolution accepting those improvements as essentially complete.
Resolution accepting the Coral Ridge Avenue Improvements Project Phase Two as substantially completed, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gil, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion?
Yes, I would just point out that this is substantially completed. That doesn't mean everything is 100% done, and the contractor has agreed to come back in the spring and replace the trail that is on the west side of the road. There's some issues with the slope of the trail, and it creates ponding issues and some other things along there, so they will be coming back and doing that in the spring, but a majority of the work is unsatisfactory.
Well, that explains why that says "trail closed" on that, and I wondered what that was. Thank you. Anything else? Roll call.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Okay, resolution's approved, all ayes. Item 11 is the Wastewater Treatment Plan Improvements. This is for an agreement for additional materials testing for our project of updating our wastewater treatment plant.
Resolution approving a supplemental agreement number two with TerraCon Consultants, Inc., for additional material testing services for First Avenue Improvement, Sixth Street to Ninth Street, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodds, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item 12, I'd consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended. Move to approve the consent calendar, items A through R inclusive.
Second.
Moved by Gil, seconded by Dodds. Any discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Item 13, City Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, would just like to welcome Ivan here as well, and Ivan is a member of Troop 207, and was working on the Communications Mayor badge and Citizenship in the community as well. So Ivan was one of those that I got the honor to take skiing for the first time a couple weeks ago, and Ivan took ski lesson the first day we were there, and by the end of the day was on the Black Diamond slopes, while I was on the beginner's slopes, and so... Just a couple of quick things. First, congratulate the Fire Department on having a successful winter firefights this last weekend. They had lots and lots of firefighters show up from around the Midwest, so that went really, really well, and Fur Fest had their ninth annual event, and it was a sellout again, and was very successful with no incidences, so that was good. And just, and the other, last thing I'd like to remind people is that the caucuses, both Democratic and Republican, are coming up on Monday evening, and I would encourage two things. I would encourage people to get there early, and would also encourage them to carpool and find other ways to get to their caucus site, because there is going to be, and we've had lots of conversations with the organizers of both groups, that, you know, some of these, they expect large attendance there, and so parking will be limited, so I would encourage people as much as possible to carpool, and we'll be as lenient as we can in regards to some of the parking issues, but do please get there as early as possible and carpool, so that's all I had.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. Just to tag on to that, yeah, it's, if you're in line at 7 o'clock, you'll be counted, but if you show up at 5 minutes after 7 and say you couldn't find a parking space, you had luck. They're really going to enforce the 7 o'clock deadlines, so no latecomers this year. Okay, Mayor's Report. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, this Thursday evening is the second round of public input meetings for the Area Transit Study that we are participating, along with Iowa City and campus, in. So, our meeting here in Corleville, it'll include all three systems, but the one we're hosting will be in this room this Thursday evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So I encourage folks to come out, and they're going to have some ideas and recommendations to present and get some feedback. I believe the presentation will start right at 6 o'clock of those recommendations, so I suggest getting as close as you can here at 6 o'clock. I believe that's it for me. City Attorney's Report.
I think I would be amiss if I didn't admit that my household has long been in compliance with the 19th Amendment, and in fact, she not only has a vote, she has a majority and veto powers.
I can't top that, so...
Thank you. Committee and council members report. You want to start tonight, Megan?
Sure. Actually, I don't have much. I was going to also mention the Transit Study, open house this Thursday. The, do they, do you know, do they still have the tool on the website that allows you to design your own?
No, that's completed now.
Okay, okay, I was going to mention that, if it was still open, but it's a really great opportunity to get up to speed on the conversation that is happening in our communities about our transit systems. And the only other thing I had was just to encourage folks, no matter what side you're on, to attend your caucus. I also wanted to thank all of the volunteers that are working so very hard to organize these events. I'm happy to say that I am co-chairing the site in Corleville 7 with Representative Jacoby, and I just wanted to thank everybody that has stepped up to help, and also thank John Deeth and the folks at the Auditor's Office for all of their hard work. It really does take all of us coming together to make these events happen, and it's an exciting year, you know? Makes me very proud that we're celebrating the 19th Amendment, and this is the, I think, an historic election with so many women running, so many people of color running. It, you know, progress is slow, but it is happening, and I just encourage everybody to get out and participate, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Mitch?
Yeah, a lot of it's been said by you and Megan, so I'm not chairing Megan's caucus, but I'm chairing your caucus, Mayor, so you better be there by 7 o'clock.
Okay, I'll be there long enough.
You better be there by 6:58.
Okay.
No, but I'm chairing the Corleville 2 Caucus at the Radisson Hotel, and just, yeah, I just dovetail what you and Megan both said, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
I really don't have anything. I'd like to remind everybody to keep their walks cleared. Yeah, you know, it's been, the snow was, what, a week ago, and some of them still are not shoveled, so just remind people that they need to have their walks cleared. Thank you.
Thank you. Gil?
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I'll pull it up, a couple of things. The Yeti Pedal is this Saturday, which is an outdoor winter fat tire riding event. It is from 2:00 to 4:00, and it is, oops, my phone keeps going out, at the Tom Harkin Trailhead, it is free, and I wanted to put out a thank you to Shields for partnering with Parks and Rec on this event. And then another new thing that's kind of, that I think is going to be just very fun is the Samuel J. Kirkwood Eagle Watch is this Saturday, from 11:30 to 2:00, and it is at the Iowa River Power Dam Bridge, and there will also be indoor activities in the IRP. This is free to the public, and I think will be a really nice day, and hopefully we get to see a lot of eagles.
There are a lot of eagles. Yeah, great. Thanks for reminding us. Lori?
Our sympathies to State Representative Dave Jacoby and the passing of his father, and I do have a few announcements about the Center for Performing Arts. City Circle's Evita is in concert, and it opens February 14th. It's one weekend. Eight of the quarter's leading women play the role of Evita, and tickets are going fast. Also, on Thursday, the Eugen... Also, on Thursday, the Eugensville Puppet Theater will be presenting The Big Election, a kid-friendly journey through the voting process, and a special school matinee is being held with several classes from local elementary schools. A public performance is being held that evening at seven o'clock, and city staff and families are welcome and warmly invited, and I just mentioned that I'll be registering caucus attenders at Wickham Elementary.
Very good. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
And I'll just mention that, thanks for mentioning the passing of Dave Jacoby's father. There'll be a celebration of his life held on Saturday morning on February fifteenth up in Cedar Rapids. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Second. Moved by Gil, seconded by Gross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.